Minutes from May 9th at Swinton.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. We do not have any time left for when public has left.
And the public has left the building.
I say we go ahead?
I think we should just go.
So this was a busy month, but not a, I don't, there's not a lot on here that requires to see actual attention beyond, you know, certain conversations we've been having about, like contracting and things like that. But from my point of view, it's been a lot of kind of just interdepartmental stuff, the new phone system, new email addresses, custodial changeover to a temporary, which will start hopefully with a new physical year, transition with the visits.
Nice.
That's really all, no, I don't have any details. That's going to be an improvement if just in the number of visits that we're having, so we're not having certain days where , you know, bathrooms haven't been cleaned from the day before. So that will be one.
So the custodial will be daily?
That's, that is my understanding. Again, I didn't do a lot of detail from D W, but they said that we were going to get some kind of custodial service on databases. So I assume what that means, at the very least, you know, restrooms being trash cans empty, they require anything as we have. As you saw last week, we have a little trash can by the front door, which is not a common occurrence. Like when you turn around, it's up. Yeah, but I don't really want to say that. So that will be great if even that is just, you know, improved. We have a, an updated contact list, keys to distribute for some of the two people that have keys for, that'll have to wait.
I do not have keys.
You don't have key?
I never had keys.
Wow! Alright, so you're going to, in the meantime, you go with John's key. John will activate that. So this is a, this is a, not only he's not, that key doesn't open every door.
Okay.
So at some point, I can show you what doors it does open, and if you, or if you need to come over there and tell me which one it does. But definitely, to get, it's really best for just getting into the building, then that is, that's not just a staff key. So it opens the back door locker, you know, the receiving hall, like inner door into the staff room. So if you ever need to get in, it's surefire going to work for that. It doesn't seem to work on the exterior doors. I can never remember what it does, but it'll get you in the building. Great, and I will accept your traffic for those keys. Sorry, I didn't have one for you earlier. We have, I mentioned this, I think, in previous meetings, we have had to agree with the possible criteria to begin digitizing items from our collection, having gently, to come to a chromo survey of what's around town, within the vault, Town Hall, looking to see what's there. And there's all kinds of cool stuff. So we're going to start with the nearest on that project to hopefully have something to send to UPL by the end of the year. And for us, it's going to be a little bit of a, it's a little bit of work, and I am relying a little bit on Alan to the extent that he's willing to. And he's, he's doing the tax payment stuff, so it is here to work. But what is required for all of this is to sort of create the metadata that goes along with the artifacts, because the artifacts are essentially useless, and we don't have the metadata to explain who the man is standing next to the horse in front of the house, you know, when, where is this, what is it, who is it? So it's going to become slow work, but hopefully we'll have a substantial amount of items to send to them to get digitized and be available to the public. And that'll be an ongoing process. Hopefully every six months or at least every year, we'll be sending another batch of print materials and artifacts and photographs and what have you. So I'm really excited about that, because that's, that's something that we have been, or I have been talking about doing basically since I took this job and never had the bandwidth to do it, because of all the other things that were going on. So now I feel like this is the right time.
Are you looking for volunteers or extra support for that project?
Absolutely, truly. People that, yes, people with attention to details, or, you know, it's going to be like, it's not like a lot, but it's going to need to be done accurately and keep things organized. And so you have to talk about whether we can find volunteer students, you know, library school students, people who are just in archives or whatever. The metadata is fairly minimal, and we're not going to be able to like, you know, it's not really huge thing. But we definitely want to provide some identification to everything that comes through, particularly with photographs and what have you, so that we can have helpful information to build with the items. So if you know anybody?
I'm going to send you the, I'm just going to email you the emails of the two history teachers over at Hopkins, one of whom is in charge of the Honors Volunteer Program. Like, they have to have a certain number of volunteer hours anyway, but I mean, if you can find, you know, students.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to do, like how many hours we actually have for them or whatever. But just from, like I said, maybe sort of being casually looking at what's around and, like, so for instance, Alan, you know, has much more context for this than I do, but he was looking at, you know, there are collections of, so the, when the, this, the Southern Town Hall became part of both the National Historic Register, there were surveys that were done where they, what happened, collected information on all the houses, when they were built, they had a snapshot that was taken with each one of them. So, you know, this, and then there are bunches of photographs of those houses. The thing that we have in our collection in the history room is like a Xerox of the photographs. It's not as good, you know, quality, but you have all the information there. And then you have like the photographs in another pile over in Town Hall. So the idea is to, you know, go through and link all these things up, that in particular, to match the house with a better photograph. And then Alan said, Doug, excuse my apologies, Alan said that the, that at some point in the eighties, someone had done yet, or maybe it was even before that, somebody had done yet another round of photographs of the level of how, pretty much all of the houses in town, because at that time, they were all historic, they were all old. So we again, want to like link up addresses to those and identify them. And so that would be the kind of thing that we'd be looking to have volunteers do, like matching up grave stones, the Graves' Cemetery records with the photographs they did, without making sure that they're, you know, if they had separated, that they could be linked together. So then there's lots to do. We can't quantify it yet. But let me know if you have ideas. And yeah, send me that content.
Question. In terms of the quantity of stuff that you hope to digitize over time, do you have priorities for what you want to do first? Photographs, because they may degrade, other things that are?
It's more, at this point, it's kind of more like the, well, a couple of things. It's like, what do people ask us for? And so a lot of what we refer to the most when people come, particularly the people that come from out of town to do genealogy stuff, they want to know about who's buried in the Old Hadley Cemetery. And it's almost always that cemetery. It's never any of the other cemeteries. It's always that. So we have, you know, the cemetery records for that particular, for that particular cemetery. And so that's one of the things, you know, Fred Oakley did that project about. I don't even know what year that was, probably in the nineties. And so we have a beautiful record of all those stones, a photograph of each one, transcription of whatever the text is, and it's legible. So we'd like to get that on there, so that people don't necessarily drive here from Montana until they see that stuff. They can just look online. So things like that, we've been, we've got a lot of people looking for Hopkins yearbooks. So I'm hopeful, you know, Alan's been kind of speaking with the folks at the Hopkins Foundation, because they have, you know, more complete collections of those things. He's been over to the school. He's been, as I said, involved in Town Hall. He knows everything that's in the, out of the Historical Society. So we're kind of like trying to get, we don't yet have a full plan, but we're kind of working on prioritizing that. But the part that is going to be, we don't like become overly ambitious the first time that we do this.
Right, and then we just start.
Yeah, we want to kind of like get a step out of the door, that we know what we can do, provide the metadata for it. Books are easy for UPL, because they don't have to catalog them. Generally, there's already exist a catalog record, unless it's some really unique thing to Hadley, which we don't have that much of. So we can do some of that. We should be able to just get our foot in the door with having an online collection, and then just kind of pull it over time. This is a very robust and developed infrastructure for hosting all of that stuff. And then we basically just, you know, put the links on the page and say, oh, here, this is all that is. So it's been a work on our part beyond, as I said, the cataloging part, and creating the metadata to go with it, and just keeping it organized, so we don't like mess up, you know, like use something that belongs to Town Hall. But yeah, so that's something that's kind of going along in the background. And the other thing, that I don't know if everyone will hear, I think last time, it's everybody that happened, but we received a very sizable request from the estate of Beverly Rhodes, who was one of our beloved library patrons, came here for years. And one day, they called from Town Hall and said, someone has dropped off a check and blood. And they said, it's pretty big. Oh, okay. And it was for the amount of $126,429. So that was an incredibly generous gift from, from Beverly Rhodes. So there was, as far as I know, we didn't receive anything written instructions. We didn't, you know, sort of not aware of any limitations on how the money could be used. You know, it's been deposited in a town account. And I did send her in her obituary. She wasn't someone that I knew super well, but you know, she came, you know, like a lot of people, she came in, you know, eagerly for ages and ages and ages. So it's very sad, but this is a very kind gift. And she also gave a gift to the Hadley Council on Major. That's, I think that's more of us that I probably have much else to say, other than that, as I mentioned, I would like to keep the conversation going with Dan, the sign guy, the sign fabricator, to, you know, just be productive for us, keep it going, getting the lettering done for the, for the, you know, various rooms that need to be named in a more legible way at a glance. Oh, this is the, you know, this is the meter, rather than looking at a little plaque. That's, you know, a different issue. So I'm hoping that we can get that done in the next few months as well. Guy's super busy.
Well, we did pick up those extra few names. So I looked at who came in, and then one of them, so then I cross-referenced with what I thought we had from before. So I was just wanting to get and confirm that book does actually exist on the wall. So we have some additional ones. I used that opportunity to revamp my, like, huge master list that I have. And I, we have about 10 donors from 2022, and a few of them are anonymous, have no information on them, but most of them need the hundred dollar, you know, qualification. So, I mean, if no one has any objection, I'll just put that wheel in motion. I, you know, basically, I took the, the letter slash email that Courtney had sent around, inviting people to the, you know, to fill out the form, explaining it a little bit. Obviously, I had to change it, because now the thing actually exists. So, I mean, I was able to say, I hope you've been, you know, guy to see the wall. I mean, to be fair, I think three of the books are people who are already on the wall. And so it's like, you know, they've seen it, or have not seen it, they've already seen the form, you know, so I don't think it's going to be a lot of big changes. But anyway, if no one has any objections, I'll just put that wheel in motion. And thus ideally, we could just send those folks with the additional, like four or five that we picked up, that will go on the, so those additional four or five will go on the founder's wall.
And just as a practical matter, before Dan's attention gets attracted, you know, not set up to do that, you would like to get his attention and say, can you just?
Yes. Or we could send those over along to him, like, what do you want to do, the ones that I sent you this morning?
I would, I would just as soon send him all, rather than have to, because he's just, he's not, he's great, I don't mind dealing with him, but it's just, you know, sometimes there are long lags. I mean, you send an email, you know, a month later. So I feel like, while he's kind of like in the mindset of doing this, let's just go ahead and update, and then, you know, we'll deal with 2023 when it's.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So, yeah, that will be my, so, so.
Well, I will, I'll put that in motion right away. And ideally, get people back. I put a deadline of June 15th. I figured, okay, if you guys said yesterday, and I got it out within the next two days, I gave us a month. But most of the books on the list are known quantities, so.
So the ones that anonymously donated, would you do a book for that that says anonymous donor?
I mean, we could, but, but there's so many anonymous donors.
Well, not necessarily one for every donation, but just one that acknowledges that.
But you said anonymous donors, so.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, but there's only, you know, like, we could make a list. There's probably a better way to do, if we wanted to. I'm just trying to look, this is my master list, anonymous, overtime, we've had.
I think partly it's anonymous, because we only put books up for people who filled out the form.
Correct.
So there were also lots of donors who donated and weren't commemorated there, because they.
Yeah, some said I do know, well, too.
Yeah.
So we only had six anonymous donors, three of them, four of them were, you know, a hundred dollars or more.
But I also think on the flip side of it is, if you, if you do one book spine that says anonymous donors, then people know that they can contribute anonymously, you know, but still have, still feel like they did something, like it wasn't ignored, you know, that only people who catch all.
For, you know, year over year, when we do the new order for each, you know, for each subsequent year, we could even have a thing that says anonymous donors provided, you know, X number of dollars in gifts, to just say like, that's, you know, anonymous donors give a lot.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a valid way to support the library if you don't want your name.
To be recognized.
Yeah, but I think it, it does deserve some recognition.
I wouldn't put the amount on there, because what is an anonymous donor? Is it only people who come through the system as anonymous, or is it also the people who come through the system with a name, but then they say, I don't want to have my name up?
You could do, I mean, you could do it by year if you wanted. You could just say anonymous donors, 2021 anonymous donors, you know, amount or anything, but just acknowledge that year after year, there's people who contribute to the library.
Yep. Yeah, for sure. So, yeah, I mean, you could always just stick an anonymous book on each, you know, that list that we're sending him.
Anonymous donors.
Anonymous founders.
Anonymous founders, then it could be anonymous donors 2023, something like that.
Yeah, because there was definitely at least one for the 2022 that was over a hundred, and then there was multiple for the, like, the founders years. And those were individual, those were not. Oh, I actually don't know. There were different donor IDs, I mean, donation IDs.
I wonder if there is some way, back in the, although there used to be tick profiles, at some point, to consider what the cost of having one of these books made relative to the contribution, and at what point do we perhaps consider raising the threshold?
Yeah, and we did the math at the time, and I think that's why we settled on a hundred, based on the, like, the purported cost. And you'll have to.
You don't remember?
Yeah.
My recollection was, actually, I was talking to Megan Campbell the other day, because she was doing some volunteer stuff, and we were talking about the wall. And I was relating how I couldn't remember what the figure was, but I, we both agreed that it was like, it was very affordable. So we felt like it was, you know, kind of a steal. And then when I spoke to Dan, when he was installing the wall, I asked him about it, and he was like, I don't remember either.
But you saw the list, I mean, you probably didn't have the list that had the, like, the sort of money attached to it. I can pull that up. But the vast majority of our donors, as David Checkin told us it would be, the vast majority of those on the wall, you can just see the other sides of the books, but it's not even representative, because not at all reliable. The vast majority are of like the hundred dollar range. And that was even over time. That was over, it was like five years of giving. A lot of people actually like regularly made twenty-five, 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 which is great. I mean, that's a sustaining number at NPR. If you give fifty dollars a year, right, that's fifty dollars, you don't have to go out and get it. So over time, it does, you know, build up if you collect it over time. It won't be the same case.
But that's, well, that's not going to be the same going.
Correct. But we really didn't have any, like, nobody gave ten dollars last year, but just wasn't a thing. But I also think we were actively fundraising in different ways at the time, where there were opportunities to give ten dollars, the pocket fundraiser, right? I've got a lot of people listed on there as pocket fundraiser, six dollars, a donation of six dollars, pocket fundraiser.
I'm only suggesting it because I think it should be thought about regularly, and it's easy enough to say, oh, we're not at the point where we need to make a change. I just, I just don't want it to fall off the radar. That's all I'm suggesting.
Well, we'll write it down. Tell us how much these are. I mean, that's sure, we steer this round, it's easier to see, so we'll do it from here. And mostly all small.
And one other question relative to the event calendar. Well, we had talked about the opportunity to perhaps do some sciency programs with the Charlotte Smith money. I wondered if either Julia or Luna had incorporated that in their planning for the summer.
Firstly, the, the stuff that we had hoped to bring, which we've been, like, Boston Science Museum, stuff that, by the time I put them on it, it was all, it was all worked up for the summer. We have, do have one program that is, it's, it's an organization that we've used before. It's called Mad Science. It's just like a one-day afternoon, but you know, it's a couple of hours, not like a whole day thing or anything like that. But we were able to do that. I think it's going to be easier, by virtue of the fact that we have to get the money from the community foundation and get around. We have, we need to basically prepay them for this. So I think I've sent this over to the friends to pay. It's only like, you know, whatever, three, three hundred bucks or something. And they've already committed money for, for summer reading events. So it'll be easier to do it that way, because Sharon can just, you know, write them the check, send it in the mail. I don't have to get my, move money around from the community foundation here. But what I am going to ask them to do is to, you know, to work on scheduling some events throughout the year, not just for summer reading, but just throughout the year, that fall within that limit.
Okay.
And of using the Charlotte Smith money, when we, when I have a better sense of how much that's going to cost, and, you know, what we're proposing, then I'll come back and say, I'd like to take whatever it is, five thousand dollars from.
Okay, that's. Right, like, if you're giving Mad Science to come once a week, every Wednesday afternoon and.
I'm hoping that, I think these programs are fine. I'm hoping that we can, you know, send it on.
Yeah, I'm just giving you an example.
Exactly, right.
But we can then just say, hey, here's your whole five thousand dollars, knowing that it's going to be spent over, you know, five months.
Right, that's the way to do it, is to, to as much as possible, just get the money for the year, and then have it sitting there, and then you spend it as needed. So that's the plan.
Okay, that's fine. As I mentioned, I'm sorry, do you have anything else for director?
I was going to mention that I will be away on vacation from Friday 6, 23, to Thursday 6, 21. But I should, you know, reach over something this.
Hopefully not, but the reaching.
Fire's over by.
You'll be up on location, please?
Yes.
All by yourself or with others?
With, I'm gonna ask, but hopefully not getting lung disease this time. So that's where I got, I think that's where I got.
It's so horrible this year.
Yeah, I've had multiple, not like literally like bitten me yet, but I've had them all over here, just everywhere. Can't be outside of that.
As I mentioned in the correspondence that accompanied the agenda, Patrick's contract runs through the end of this month, and we're not going to be able, I don't think, to finish bits of it that we would like to review and perhaps consider and have it looked at by the powers that be. So I would like to request a motion to extend the existing contract through the end of August, August 31st.
Yes, second.
I need the motion.
Oh, okay. Then I second it for real.
Yeah, we're not going to get it done, especially with Patrick going on vacation like this.
To, okay, so to extend it until April 1, 23.
Okay.
And it actually expires the end of June.
Correct.
Okay.
So who do we have to tell? Do we have to tell somebody over there in payroll, so he gets paid, or?
Yeah. I think, yeah, I think just, I don't, well, first of all, I don't know that anyone would even notice, but, but yes, just saying that we agreed to extend this for two, two months to.
I will convey that to Joan and Troy.
Who's Troy?
He is the new HR director.
Do we need to vote?
I think we should vote, yes. All in favor of the motion? Thank you.
Thank you for noticing.
Patrick's like, what?
Yeah.
Okay.
In my mind, we just did this, but it was like in the middle, it was like 2020, in the middle of pandemic, and I was on like, on the phone, in a meeting in my yard.
Yeah.
And it still seems like it was just yesterday. It's been three years.
So weird, right?
Well, our plan had been to consider board with organization and reading times, and I had hoped that the full complement would be here to participate. It seems to me we have two options. We can go ahead and rearrange the board, or we can do a continuation of the existing and then address it in July. And I am happy to consider either option or anything else that anyone wants to propose.
So I know that my friend Jess here is interested in relinquishing her duties, and I told her I would be happy to do it, but I also don't need to do it. So I don't think, like, I know Joanne doesn't want to do it, and I, usually a brand-new person, although you could speak to this better than I, is not interested in taking on the clerk duties, because sometimes it's hard to pay attention while you're doing it. So I don't think either one of them will do it. So unless someone here wants to do it, like, I just don't want Jess to have to do it again next month if she doesn't want to. So does anyone want, do you not want to be the chair and you want to be the clerk? Do you want to be the clerk?
I also said to Allison that I would be happy to be vice chair, but it doesn't look like your responsibilities are onerous.
Oh, yeah, I would be, I would assume that someone else would take over that duty.
I'd be happy to take that.
It's really not onerous.
In exchange for someone else taking up clerk.
Yeah. And I'm not saying we have to do everything tonight. I was proposing that if you, if it's amenable, that we vote on the clerk position tonight, so that Jess doesn't have to show up here next month and take notes. so that Jess doesn't have to show up here next month and take notes. I would rather just do it anyway.
I would rather just maybe do it temporary for the next meeting and give the other two a chance to have a voice in it and not just do it without them.
Does that sound good to you?
Yeah, it's fine. And I can, I can join us for the, yeah.
I'll just assume that I'm doing it just the way as if you are sick or whatever.
Okay.
All right. Okay, I think we will. When you see the end in sight and then you get sucked back in, it's a sick and feeling, you know? But whatever it is, not this particular, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I don't want you to have to do that.
All right, then we will hold off on that. I did have a conversation with John at the event on Saturday, but it was not quite so much on the, shall we say, this professional level. Given his background, it doesn't, nothing jumps out to me, but I didn't ask him if he had interest in any of these.
Subcommittees, you mean, or?
Correct, so, yes.
Well, what is his background?
Um, he said that he used to have a record store. I forget if it was in Amherst or Northampton.
Yeah, it was in Amherst.
In Amherst. And in twenty sixteen, he got a degree in psychology and he is now doing counseling, mostly couples counseling.
Maybe he'd be good on the personnel subcommittee. That's sometimes counseling.
The personnel subcommittee is process oriented, not.
Product oriented.
Yeah. I had invited both Joanne and John to express interest in the then two subcommittees we had previously discussed and heard nothing from either of them on that score after I sent the agenda out following a lengthy conversation with Patrick about relative to the donor wall and fundraising and the bequests. Having included that as a subcommittee, Joanne said she very much would like to participate at that level now that she has an inside understanding of Friends and their fundraising. She doesn't see library fundraising necessarily to create any tension or conflict or overlap. So she's interested in that. One of the things that Patrick and I talked about was is there a way excuse me, to come up with parameters? In the way that you have parameters for the donor wall, is there some other way that we would like to both encourage and acknowledge substantial bequests? And then we have the photograph and framed bit about Char Smith and now we have this Ben Rhodes, which, I'm sorry, I didn't know her. Those are substantial amounts and there's part of me that would like to see rather than just little frames somewhere around, a more substantial plaque of some sort that can be changed or can be added to where names of individuals who contribute above, and I don't know, I'm not imagining what the threshold would be. But that's one thing I would like to think about. And other ways, even if we are not engaged in an active campaign to solicit, but to let people know that we are very willing to either talk to them or have them make those kinds of gifts with or without restriction. So I think that needs some thought and probably other things that I haven't even mentioned or considered. And so Joanne very much would like to participate at that level. I will see if I can call John. Well, I will call John and have a conversation with him.
I was just going to talk on what you said. I think it's about the same lines of what you said, Susan, about like acknowledging that anonymous donor is a thing, right? If we had a, I'm just going to say plaque because I don't know what else to say. You know, generous bequest by, and then just list people who give us bequests. Whatever that amount is, like honestly, it just gives you a, we don't give them requests. It's not like we're going to have plaques and plaques full of people that we need to quest. So I mean, even if we didn't have a parameter, like a minimum amount for that particular thing, it would let people know, oh, yeah, I could think of bequests of the type.
Well, and I think too, when this, the Mars meeting about whether or not we go ahead with.
It's next week.
Okay.
What are we going?
They're voting on the, on the, the whether or not to accept the contract with the company that does that, that third party that does sort of like the added functionality for the catalog.
And also websites.
Yeah.
But that is certainly something that could also be.
Live on the web page.
Yes. So that I think that we can kind of raise the profile and just to let people know that we're open to this. We don't want their old car, although I just heard a thing about old cars, used cars being worth a lot. But anyway, um, but I think that's a quiet way to.
Yeah.
And I also think that at this point, having, you know, gotten to where we've gotten and been, you know, fairly successful with fundraising, some of that, again, was through no fault of our own. But, you know, we have raised a lot of money, whether it's based on active fundraising or just through goodwill in the community. And I think at this point, it would be good for us to sit down on some, some side of this and have a conversation about what is the, if not the strategy, what is our feeling about fundraising and what role does it play? How active should it be? Should there be an active capital campaign at all times? Should the capital campaign change over to some other kind of ongoing campaign? And I think we just really need to have a holistic conversation about it to, because I don't think that it should go to sleep. I really think that, you know, having these resources, as, you know, as we were saying at this, at this presentation on Saturday, it gives us a lot of flexibility and gives us a lot of freedom. So I think that keeping that up and, you know, we are going to have big expenses and a lot of that money will be depleted if we have to do something substantial to, you know, deal with the river, get someone.
Or just get sold.
Whatever, there are things outstanding that are costing money. So I think we should always be thinking about it. And I think it's, we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel, but we maybe need to find some new, you know, interesting parties that, that want to do this kind of volunteer work and just have it ongoing. That's my feeling about it, but I think we need to have a conversation about what that looks like in order to trust.
So if anyone else would like to work with Joanne and Patrick, let me know. Susan and I'll just set up a date to meet to begin to talk about the director working process. I will note that the contract says it's supposed to be completed in May.
I think we could change that, right? We're going to change that so it fits with the budget cycle, wasn't that right?
Yeah.
Well, that's the thought.
Yeah. Because we just did it, so we don't want to do it again.
But you did it for the previous fiscal year.
It ends in June.
Correct.
Right, and it was delayed for a, for a variety of reasons. And we talked at some point about actually recalibrating the evaluation period. We ended up not doing that. But if it's an evaluation that includes June, then you wouldn't want to do it in May.
Well, I'm just saying that's what's written in the contract, which caught me.
Right, we're trying to use that because we're saying.
Well, yeah, we're copying boss supplies. And my thought is, oh, they're trying to make sure that they get all of the board members before anyone might snuggle off. But our meeting tends to come at about the time of the election. So I don't know whether or not that would be assured.
Yeah, I think that, I think if I recall back from Patrick, I think right now, really only two people in the room who are here, when we conceived of this concept of having you in a separate contract so you can be protected. I think the only reason that went into it is that in order to evaluate anyone, like try not to think about Patrick, you need to have the package done before the contract is expiring. So we just made sure that it wasn't done, you know, like, within August when the contract was. Oh, true, yeah. I think that was a rationale. I don't think there was any big.
No, I mean, unfortunately, that's the thing. Like, we, it didn't really occur to me until I was going through the process every time I've had to put together the budget that I had, you know, that the pieces were all out of, they didn't make logical sense. And I don't think it was because, there were a lot of reasons to do it so that it was ready to, you know, sign it on the dotted line for July one, the new year, and kind of keep it a single that. But it doesn't really work with the reality of budgeting. So, um, so that's why I think we need to look at that when we, when we discuss this. And I, I have some ideas about it personally that I will, you know, that we can talk about whenever we talk about the, the contract itself. But I personally think that it should be, should be moved further into the year, closer to, you know, the review should happen from, that's, I think that should probably happen starting July one to review the previous year, have that be done. And then the contract is ahead of the budget cycle.
I feel like whatever works practically is the best solution. Because again, we, it's like when you move into a house. It's like, you know, fill up your closet, you've got to live in your house for a while and see what's really going to work. And so we had to do something. We had to get you a contract. We had to have a evaluation process. But I don't, I don't have a feeling that anyone was added to it.
No, I know, and I, this is last, this is time, I don't remember why we did this because I was actually hired in November. And then I had a contract, but it was like a nine month contract or six, I don't remember what it was. It was some odd month. It wasn't like a full year, I think. And then we got off to this like.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year cycle. And from there, I had a three year contract, I had a two year contract. So, yeah, I don't know what the thought process was on the, on the trustee and when that was put together. But just probably we'll see, but, you know, three or nine months, with whatever risk.
We probably just wanted to make it go the fiscal year. I don't remember, maybe Joanne does. Now that Joanne's back, we're getting along with institutional memory back.
Yeah, well, hopefully so. Hopefully she hasn't forgotten everything.
I had to. Which, because we forgot, suggests to me that there's no real reason.
That's kind of what I think, but it's just sort of like, well, you can pick a date, July one, that makes sense, so.
Right, and you're not, there's no documentation of, of notes.
I'm sure back in the minutes.
Sure, in the buyer in the office. I mean, we could, we could definitely look at that, but I don't necessarily know that it's that illuminating.
Versus moving the evaluation earlier makes sense. Like, I know why we did that. It's because of the budget.
Sure.
That makes sense.
Yes.
And that's why I remembered, because it makes sense. There was a reason we chose this. We didn't just decide to do something.
I'll return.
Yeah.
No. No, I can follow that logic.
Okay.
Um, I am not aware of anything else that we need to do.
I'd said, well, you've already entered the conversation about keeping the momentum going. Also, that's all I have.
Well, then maybe July will be a little bit more substantial.
What's the date for July eleven? Is that the eleventh?
Yes.
Last year, didn't we skip August?
Yes.
We did.
Are we going to make that decision in July?
I, I think it will depend on where we are with the contract negotiations and approvals and whatever. Because I believe everyone, all of the board members need to sign it as well as Patrick. Okay, motion for adjournment. Second, all in favor? Second, all in favor?